It's six o'clock. I'd like to call independent school district seven twenty-one to order. Janelle, please note that all board members are present except Kim Holden. So let's stand and say the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, starting off, we'll start with the spotlight on success. First off, we're gonna have the recognition of the bowling team. So would you like to introduce?
Yeah, if I could invite the bowling team reps to come up and just say introduce themselves and say a few words about their significant accomplishment. And then, Mr. Chair, I'd like to note that due to technical difficulties again, that's okay. I'll do it for you. Due to technical difficulties, yeah, due to technical difficulties again tonight, this meeting is gonna be recorded and then uploaded to be viewed at a later date. We thank you for your understanding and we hope to have this remedied by our January business meeting. So our apologies, our apologies for that and thank you for understanding. Now on to more fun business, the bowling team. So please introduce-
Have a seat, guys.
Have a seat. Tell us a little bit about the season and then hopefully we'll hear from some students as well, or at least they can wave.
Wonderful. Well, first off, thank you very much for having us in and recognizing the bowling team. It was a fantastic year. My name is Al Pankow. I am the head coach of the New Prague High School Bowling Team.
Darren Pommier, proprietor of Strike Force Bowl and a coach for the bowling team also.
So the New Prague High School Bowling Team's been around since we were just reviewing it since two thousand twelve. We've had the team around. It's had a fantastic run. This year in particular was absolutely terrific. Our varsity team ended up taking fifth place in the state. Great run for them. The kids have put a lot of work, time, energy into it. Darren and I have been working with these kids since they were seventh grade or before in terms of developing them and seeing them have those accomplishments. It's absolutely fantastic. On top of the varsity team taking fifth place, our JV red team, which is a higher of our two JV teams, also took fifth place in the state. And then we actually had our lower, our lowest, youngest JV team actually advanced to the state tournament on an at large bid. I think they finished fourteenth or fifteenth out of the eighteen teams there. So just a great experience for them all the way around. Kids had absolutely fantastic accomplishments. We did end up winning our conference. I think we ended up with a Claire fourteen and two record.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, so fourteen and two record in the regular conference play. We ended up averaging approximately one hundred and ninety-six for the year as a team. I don't know how many, how much you guys know about the high school bowling team, but it's run as a Baker system format. So basically, instead of bowling a standard game where everybody bowls all ten frames, the five bowlers combine to make the score for the team score. So if a person bowls the first frame, that person will bowl the sixth frame. Second person bowls second frame, seventh frame, third person, third frame, eighth frame. So it truly is a team sport from that aspect of the kids having to work together to get the scores. So couldn't be proud of them. We had many numerous accomplishments individually for what we did with the team. We ended up having four of our kids on the all-conference team on the gold team, which is the top all-conference team. They take the top six bowlers from the conference are on the gold team. We had our other two bowlers of the six that were on the high school varsity team for New Prague were on the silver team for the all-conference. So great accolades all the way around. Ms. Claire Jacobson was also named as the most outstanding player for our conference this year, and she also made the second team All-State awards. So just terrific. Kids have put in a ton of work. We have a great program. We ended up having three teams this year with eighteen kids associated with the program.
Six per team.
Six per team. Season typically starts for them in August. It's around kind of the same schedule as what the football team is. So we cannot start until-
The twelfth or fifteenth roughly around there.
Yeah, but the team, but the team can take initiatives, have captain's practices, do things on their own, which Darren and Julie over at Strike Force have been very supportive of, allowing the kids to come in, practice, get their time in, and give us the time in the lanes. Once we can start working with the kids, unbelievable dedication. So I'll turn it over to Darren and say a couple of words to be asked.
Our meets are during the weekdays, Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday, one a week usually. We usually skip MEA week.
Yeah.
And a lot, a lot of conferences do Saturdays. Our conference, there might be another couple of conferences in the state that also do it during the weekdays. But the weekdays work really smooth. That way they have their weekends open.
Yep. So it's, it's just truly a fun sport and to watch these kids excel, grow, and create the relationships that they're creating out there and the dedication that they put into it. The New Prague High School Bowling Program has had a really strong tradition of success. If you go back and look at where our rankings are, I mean, I honestly, I can't remember the last time we have not made the state tournament. And yeah, we've had numerous good showings. We've produced some really good bowlers out of the program. I think right now, we currently have three kids out of the bowl, out of the program bowling collegiately right now and actively and doing very well at their collegiate bowling. Claire is actually also signed to bowl for Newman University for next year. So that'll be number four coming out of the program. So just, I, I want to give a round of applause to these kids because they have put the work in. So. Yeah, and you guys, I'd like to have the kids come up and talk a little bit, or do you guys have any questions for me and Darren?
What, what is the furthest lanes that you go to?
So we bowl against Mount Westhanka and Minnetoka, all bowl out of country club lanes, which is in Mount. So yeah, so about, about an hour away.
And then we also bowl at Belle Plaine and New Prague here, Strike Force. So just three centers. And we have four varsity teams and seven JV teams.
Yes, correct. So.
The most we ever had on varsity before, I think, is six.
Six or seven. I think we might add seven one year. So.
So the stronger the JV teams, hopefully can get, you can only have one varsity team for every town. So we have, there's, we, we have two JV teams. Belle Plaine had three JV teams. So that's where you get more JV teams. So.
We've, we've just had such a great run with it and typically we've run, minimum typically has been three JV teams for the last number of years. And we had one year, a couple of years ago, we actually ended up having four JV teams. So kudos to Darren and Julie for what they do with their junior programs and stuff, to get the kids involved and, and going with it and promoting the sport. You know, it's just, it is a fun, fantastic sport and kids put a lot of dedication and effort. And we are knowing, you know, New Prague has done a great job with the quality of the bowlers and the, just the type of people that were turning out of this program. Program's very well-respected statewide. So it's, it's fun, fun to be associated with these kids. So.
How many years have you been the head coach?
Probably seven years now, I think it is. I started when my son turned, went into seventh grade. I started out coaching one of the JV, the lowest JV team with him, and my daughter was bowling in as well after a couple of years in. I was kind of approached to see if I would want to take over and jump in and start taking over the varsity team, and I've stuck with it. My son graduated a couple of years ago and I'm, I'm still here. So.
Thank you.
So apparently I'm enjoying it. So.
Any idea how many districts compete?
Uh, right now, I want to say it's seventeen or eighteen districts across the state. So, and that goes all the way from very southern Minnesota to International Falls. So.
Hundred twenty-five teams or so?
Yeah, it's a hundred and twenty-five, hundred and twenty-seven teams, something like that. So, yeah.
So New Prague did very well.
Oh, yes, yes. We, we've, we've had, had a great showing. Like I said.
There's four classes.
Yep.
Eight, uh, four A.
Single eight of four A. And we were in the two A division this year. But yeah, we've, we've had a great run. And like I said, it's pretty much every year where we seem to be in contention. So.
Knocking on the door, just kind of.
Yep. Yeah. We're, we're getting that close. One of these years, it's, we're, we're getting there. So.
Wonderful. And they can do it for a lifetime, which is just such a benefit of that sport.
It is a lifetime sport, one hundred percent. Darren and I, when we walk out of here, he and I are going to bowl league tonight. So.
Try to.
We'll give it our best shot. So.
Students, we won't put you on the spot, but do you mind coming up to the microphone and just introducing yourself, please?
Claire does have a few words for you too.
Oh, perfect.
Okay.
Um, hello, everyone. My name is Claire Jacobson, and I'm a senior at the high school, and I'm also the captain of the bowling team, and I have been for the last three years. Before I get into the main part of my speech, I just wanted to tell you a little bit about my relationship with bowling. I started bowling at the age of five, and I very quickly fell in love with it. At the age of five, I looked up to the bowlers in the high school program, and I knew I wanted to be just like them. This year, I have the high unofficial field percentage for all female bowlers in the state of Minnesota, high school bowling rankings of all time. I was named the conference most outstanding player, and I was placed in the second team All-State, and I, along with five other bowlers from our conference, were able to represent the conference and took fourth place at the all-conference tournament. I was also able to commit and sign my national letter of intent at the Division Two level for Newman University, and in the process, I turned down many Division One opportunities. This year I took, this year, the high school team took fifth at state and had four bowlers who qualified for the individual state tournament, taking place this weekend. At this, at state, over twelve games, our team averaged one ninety-four and took fifth place out of sixteen teams in the two A state tournament. This is just a fraction of the success our program and I have had. I have three other bowlers standing behind me who are equally as talented, yet many people are unaware of the success our program has had. All of our bowlers work incredibly hard and have been able to achieve many amazing accomplishments. The previous lack of recognition affects not only the student athletes within our program, but also younger bowlers who look up to the bowlers in the high school program. They strive to be just like us when they are older, and the lack of acknowledgement and respect often affects them even if they don't fully understand it yet. In conclusion, bowling is more than just a game. It's a sport that requires dedication, practice, and skill. So let's give bowling the respect it deserves. Let's recognize the accomplishments and support its athletes. Thank you for allowing bowling to have the recognition tonight it deserves. Our bowlers work incredibly hard to be where we are today. Our program has had many successes over the years worthy of recognition. This recognition is so much more than just the program. It inspires a whole next generation of youth athletes. And none of this would be possible without the help of and support of our coaches like Al Pankow, Darren Pommier, and Julie Pommier. We can't thank you enough.
Fabulous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Can everyone else introduce themselves, please? Do you mind? You don't have to say anything other than your name and how about what grade you're in, unless you would like to say something.
My name's Nolan Balk. I'm a senior at New Prague High School, and I've been bowling since I was in elementary school.
I'm Harper Lowitzin.
Awesome.
Let's give them a big round of applause, please.
Thanks for coming, you guys.
When we have students who come, when we have students who come, we have a tradition of taking a picture with some sunglasses. And the sunglasses are gonna come to you because we ran out. But after you say your final piece, then we're gonna take a quick picture.
There are missing two bowlers, Gabe Podrats and Brecken Hansen could not be here tonight. So.
Congratulations to them. Wonderful.
So do you mind coming back up and we'll take a quick picture and then we'll get those sunglasses too?
Sunglass weather.
Give them caps.
Yeah, stocking cap would be good. Oh, for them? Yeah. Just the kids. Andy's hurrying things along.
So cool. It's wonderful. Knock them all down tonight. That's right.
All right, now next on, for spotlight success, we have a conversation about the Business Services and Human Resources Department.
Yeah, I'd like to welcome up Ms. Sandy Lynn. She's gonna talk a little bit about all the different things that happen out of Business Services in terms of school finance, human resources, gonna try to quantify all of those, all this, all this important work that happens behind the scenes. So take it away.
Right, our work is not very fancy or creative necessarily, but we perform a very necessary function for the district, and that's making sure the business side of things are all taken care of. So I want to talk first about who we have in the business office. We have a one point oh FTE payroll, Aga Phronik. She's been in the job about a year and a half or so. And I just pulled some stats from twenty-three, twenty-four. There were eighteen thousand six hundred and twenty-five payroll checks or direct deposits. There were one thousand forty-three different employees paid, and there's a total of twenty-one point five million was paid out through that system. Accounts receivable is Brenda Pinch. She is part-time, just a little over halftime, and she does accounts receivable. And we had twenty-six hundred receipts. That's, you know, making sure all the coding is correct and making sure we have the receipts needed and going through and scrubbing pretty much everything in accounts receivable. Accounts payable, we have Ann Bueller. She's a point seven FTE. She processed a total of five thousand two hundred and fourteen checks during twenty-three, twenty-four, and there was eleven thousand one hundred and twelve invoices. So each invoice has to be processed for, for payment. But some checks include more than one invoice. So, yeah, and she's got to make sure all the coding is correct. There's questions. She knows what to question, to bring to me, like, was this, is this allowable? Or, you know, and then that person gets a call from me and then I'm, yeah, and it's not so happy, but she's very good at what she does as well. And we have our fiscal coordinator, Chrissy Hanson. She's a one point oh FTE, and she is responsible for the salary and benefit budget, which is about eighty-three percent of our budget. And so when you, when I present a budget, about all the salary and benefit lines have been done by her, of course, checked by me and double-checked and triple-checked. But she's responsible for that. She administers the federal grants, including filing all the paperwork and the reports and working with MDE, making sure all the rules are followed. She balances cash monthly to the bank, which is, you know, quite complicated in our situation. She oversees payroll. She used to be the payroll person, so she oversees all of, all of that. And she's the backup to payroll as well if Aga couldn't do payroll. She does a lot of special analysis as needed. We were, when we were doing budget reductions, asked her to do a lot of analysis for those. And just things come up all the time where she helps me with things. She's the primary audit support for me. We have a list of things we have to do for the audit. She probably has, you know, probably almost half of them. So she's a real big contributor to the audit, and she's responsible for our UFRS file. UFRS is all the codes and expenditures that get reported to the state. So just, you know, overall, there's some other things that the business office does. We manage the frontline time tracking system. So all of our hourly employees are on time sheets, and it's through an automated system. We do all the federal and state reporting as required, a lot of payroll reports and so forth. We do a lot of investigation of finance issues as they come up. The oddest things come up sometimes. And we have to, you know, investigate them till they're resolved in a, in a, in a good manner. And again, everybody in the business office provides some audit support. Human resources. We have two human resources specialists. One is for non-certified. That's Melissa Cartek. And then one for the certified staff, Amanda Kolok. So we just had, again, some numbers pulled, and the number of new hires we processed during twenty-three, twenty-four was three hundred and ninety-seven. So every one of those has to have a background check and fill out all the paperwork and get set up in payroll. And, you know, a lot of, if they're benefit eligible, we have to go through the benefits, provide an orientation and everything. Number of terminations was, is one hundred and eighty-four. I was a little puzzled by that because we don't add like two hundred employees every year. But there's a lot of people that we hire that, you know, might be a temporary job, and we just keep them active in the system in case they do something else for us. And then we term them, and they never end up on the board spreadsheet because they were just temporary positions. A good example of this is the summer staff for Kids Company. And we process leaves, thirty-seven leaves, FMLA leaves. These are quite complicated. They help the employee through all the paperwork and explain all the, how the pay will work and the benefits will work and everything. Other things they do, of course, is to provide daily customer service to employees. They answer all the day-to-day health and dental insurance issues, and they also are in charge of open enrollment, answer employee contract questions, state and federal reporting again. They manage the frontline sub and absence system. They provide audit support. Even HR has some audit work. And then employee, they participate in negotiations, and then they do the retro pay and benefit calculations, which is, needs to be very accurate. And they also deal with the certified staff licensure issues. We're constantly getting out-of-field permissions, tier one, tier two. And Amanda leads the, the employee through all of that to make sure that everybody has a license and is qualified to teach in the fall. And then also the absence manager, oh, I kind of had that before. Yeah, so these are the other things that HR does. And then I have one more employee, Samantha McDonald. She's a one point oh. She's the assessment and information system specialist. There's really no stats to pull for her, but she is an incredibly valuable resource to the district. So she oversees the administration of state and local student testing. There's a lot to that. One day she was, you know, kind of explaining it all to me. It's really incredible, everything that has to happen for the assessments to take place. She's the system administrator for Infinite Campus, Skyward, and Frontline. So she is the data export, expert in Infinite Campus. She provides support for staff and parents. If you ever have an issue with Infinite Campus or anything, you can call Samantha and she, you know she will help you. She's very patient, and she will deal with any level of technology and just very calmly walk them through. And she generates reports for internal and external entities. She does amazing spreadsheets. I had to underline that. Well, I was with Brian Fell last Thursday, and I showed him this spreadsheet that she set up for our staffing for every year. I mean, it really is an amazing spreadsheet. She is a Google Sheet. She is very, very good at that. So yeah, she is an expert in Google Sheets. I just wanted to point out some of the state and federal changes we've dealt with since I've been here. First of all, the Affordable Care Act. I was here, we implemented that. We still have to do the ten ninety-fives every year, and that's quite a big job. We had to deal with wage theft, and that was implemented probably three or four years ago. We now have to deal with summer unemployment that went into effect a couple of years ago, earned safe and sick time. And we had to do the initial implementation, but they continue to tweak it every year. The legislature is in session. And so I think they're talking about tweaking it again this legislative session. And the paid family leave is coming in twenty-twenty-six. That's the program through the state of Minnesota that will allow employees to apply, just like unemployment, if they're ill or if they have family members are ill, bonding leave with children and so forth. And that will be a huge process for HR to get up to speed on and process all the paperwork for that. And then we always have annual licensing changes for Pelsby. Every, every year, there's some changes, and we just have to keep up on those and, and make sure that we're following all the rules. So we have a qualified licensed staff in every classroom. Okay, so any questions at all? Just wanted to highlight them because we're kind of behind-the-scenes kind of people.
We certainly have a well-run organization here. I just can't think of any real major problems that we've ever had with this, with this office. It's, it's been running very smoothly, and a lot of it comes to their director.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
Well, thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Very much.
Thank you.
All right, next section is the open forum, which we do not have any tonight. And then I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda. So move.
Second.
First and seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries six zero. I'd also entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
First and seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, motion carries six zero. And then we go to the board committee reports. First off, we have the Southwest Metro.
We will have our monthly meeting a week from tomorrow.
Okay. How about CPAC?
Uh, CPAC has not scheduled a meeting yet.
Okay. All right, community ed.
I should say a second meeting.
Second meeting, yeah. Community ed.
It's Kim, I think.
Oh, that's Kim. Early childhood.
Uh, we meet next Tuesday.
Okay, perfect. Joint powers.
Not in the last two weeks.
Not, oh, yeah. Equity committee, right, district advisory committee.
Not last week.
All right, so we're good here. So, okay. And then superintendent meeting, we're gonna move that to the end. So we're, and then we'll move on to this, all right, we're moving right along. This is gonna be a quick one. So reports and discussion items. First off, we have the superintendent evaluation and just, so that's majority me, but I'll have, ask anybody else to chime in as well. But so basically the process, just to take a little step back, basically, as a board, we were all at, you know, Dr. Volmuth had essentially, we'd set and approved seven different goals for, for last year at the beginning of the year. And of course, most of those were around, obviously, he was a new superintendent, so how is he gonna get into the role as a new superintendent? How is he gonna engage the community and staff and things like that? And on top of it, we asked him to approve a levy as well. So it's kind of what that first year was focused around. And then he was evaluated, basically, we call it like a three sixty. So he self-evaluated himself on, with a series of questions. The cabinet slash leadership also did this, evaluated him as well. And then, of course, the board, and that's what I'm gonna be, or we're gonna be evaluating on. And just to remind everybody, like, what the goals were. And I won't go through what all of our answers were because they were all either meeting expectations or exceeding or outstanding. So it, there was, as a board, none of us had rated them any lower on these. And so, but I'll just go through the goals just so everybody's aware of those for last year. So to support the, number one was to support the New Prague area schools' school board and achieve excellence in governance. And if, obviously, on all these goals, I mean, they're ongoing, but we all felt that he was, you know, exceeding or meeting expectations. Goal number two was to create systems and structures to enhance excellence in management. So obviously, as a group, we wanted support from him from a, from a governance standpoint. And then obviously, from a management with the, with his teams. And again, we all had meeting or exceeding expectations. Goal number three was to create and execute proud tradition and promising future referendum campaign. And that's obviously the, the vote that went out last year, and again, meeting or exceeds. Goal number four was facilitate effective and efficient implementation of the strategic plan, meeting or exceeding. Five was improve academic achievement outcomes, meeting or exceeding. Goal number six was develop a positive working relationship with staff, families, and members of the greater community. And then lastly was creating a robust superintendent evaluation. And then part of this process, I know Andy and I, we had a discussion as well, obviously with, we felt that you had either met or exceeded all of those goals. But then I think we talked about things that, from an improvement standpoint, was being that visionary and then enhancing on the strategic plan. None of these things are gonna come out as a surprise, continuing with academic achievement and how we're gonna push forward with that and developing a plan going forward to make sure we're focusing on the curriculum and academic results that our students are getting. And then just the evaluation process, I think we're, I think it was a goal of just to make sure we continue to enhance that as well. So those are the three areas that we had discussed from a standpoint of not needing improvement, but continuing ongoing structure to those. So anybody else want to provide any feedback or anything else from?
I, I just want to say that in his first couple of years here, things have been really good. Things have been fantastic. And I'm really, really appreciative of all the leadership that he's shown everybody. I think you're swell.
Anything else? All right, otherwise, go ahead.
I, I complimented Karen. It's been a good two years with Andy at the helm.
All right, do we have to approve this or anything, do we think, or this evaluation? No? Okay. All right, well then, good. Hearing nothing else, we'll move on to the first reading of policies.
That's me. We have three first-read policies tonight. Policy one oh one point one, name of the school district. Purpose of this policy is to clarify the name of the school district. Anybody have any trouble with that? Dan?
I'm good.
Mark?
Good.
Uh, Matt?
I'm good.
Gene?
Good.
Denny?
No problem.
Done. Policy one oh four, school district mission statement. Purpose of this policy is to establish a clear statement of the purpose for which the school exists. Questions or comments? Denny?
No comment.
Gene?
No.
Matt?
Good.
Mark?
Good.
Dan? Policy, third one, three oh one, school district administration. Purpose of this policy is to clarify the role of the school district administration and its relationship with the school board. Questions or comments? Dan?
Nope.
Cam's not here. Mark?
No.
Matt?
Yep.
Gene?
No.
Denny?
None.
Done. Lightning. Lightning.
All right, now we're moving to the action items portion. First off, we have the truth, uh, truth and taxation presentation slash approval for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five. That'll be Sandy.
Okay, tonight, we're gonna do the truth and taxation presentation and ask for any public input if they have any. This is a required presentation, and we have to have our cert, levy certified five days prior to the end of the year. This is a required presentation and we have to have our cert, levy certified um five days prior to the end of the year. So um, the law says we have to have a public meeting. Uh, the proposed tax levy as, and it has to include a discussion of the current year budget and the taxes payable the next uh calendar year. And again, an opportunity for public comment. Um, this is just a general uh reference point. Um, for our general fund, our main operating fund. Our local property tax levies are only 12% of our total revenue. Uh, state revenue is 82%, and other six. So this is not the majority of our revenue, but it provides obviously um needed uh resources to run our district. If we look at all funds, um, including our debt service and community services, our um property taxes are 20.4%. That's because of our debt service uh payments every year, and that is a large portion of our levy every year. And again, community services is a smaller part, but certainly we have a community services um section as well for property tax levies. So how are our taxes determined? There's several different types of levies. The first is a voter-approved levy, and that's a bond for building projects or operating levies. You could include a capital project levy in that as well. And so those are approved by the voters. Then there are some that are optional and school board has to make the decision. Um, one is facility leases, one is reemployment, um, OPEB, other post-employment benefits, disabled school childcare, and then local optional revenue that they added like in 2013. And then there's levies set by state formula that we can't change. And the, the list of them are there. Um, there's quite a few. All the levies in red are equalized levies. So that means that the total district revenue for that category is paid partially in state aid and partially in uh local tax levy. And the goal of equalization is to equalize the impact to local property tax owners based on the market value per student. So we are a low property value district, and so it's trying to equalize that with a, uh, like a rich field or something with all the um industry they have. Unfortunately, that every year it doesn't change. We lose more and more state aid and more goes on to levy. And um, that's unfortunate, but our overall revenue doesn't change, but it's, they put more burden on the local taxpayer. For our 2025 levy, we have good news. It's going down um slightly. And that's, it's going down a total of $23,400, which isn't much, but it's, it's a, it's better than an increase for certain. Our general operating levy uh is going up less than a percent and over about $52,000. And there's a few reasons for that. One is that there's that early retirement incentive payout that we can levy for this year um that we paid out last year. Uh, we also have um school readiness plus students. That's, this is the first year we receive, receive school readiness plus funds. And they are included in our overall um student count, so local optional levy and um referendum levy and everything is, those ADMs are included in there. Uh, we also had slightly lower enrollment. You know, our enrollment is decreasing. And we have unfortunately a higher levy versus aid in local optional and operating capital. And then we had a few prior year adjustments. Community services is going up about $8,000 or a little over 2%. You know, we, there's several, several levies in there. Uh, the ECFE levy increased a little bit, school age childcare levy decreased, and we had some prior year adjustments. Debt service, uh, 6.3 million, down 1.3% or $84,000. This is due to um the refunding of our bonds that we did in November. And that will lower our levy for 2025. It'll lower every, every year for the next 16 years, I believe. So, going down, which is very good news. This shows the levy history. Um, so you can see we're at 12,807 this year. That's down pretty significantly from the 14.3 million in 2023. So um, I think our taxpayers, uh, well, nobody wants to pay taxes, at least that's a good trend. Then the voter-approved versus non-voter-approved. So 53% of our levies are voter-approved, and that's mainly due to the debt service um payments. And then 47% are non-voter-approved levies. Levy by fund, our general and fund and our debt service fund are almost equal. And then uh, community services has that small sliver of 3%. So this is the estimated tax impact. If a property value did not change. So if a home value, I just picked a few home values. If it's 310,000, it would go, the levy would go down about um $22 a year, which is 3.5%. Almost 400,000, down $23 a year or 2.8%. And then 556,000, uh, $5 a year or .5. So um, you see the higher property value, the lower uh, the increase. So in the city of New Prague, if a home value decreased 0 to 5%, which is only 7% of properties in the city, the tax burden will go down uh $39 or 6.3%. If a home value increased slightly, which is 28% of properties, they still go down. It was to go down $8 a year. But if they, if the home value increased 5 to 10%, which is a third of our properties, uh, the tax levy would increase $30 a year or almost 5%. But again, that would just be um due to the value increasing in their home. Um, normally on, in December, the truth and taxation meeting, I do present the uh revised budget for approval. But I did that last meeting, so I just have a one-page summary of the, of the general fund budget that was approved two weeks ago. And just wanna briefly cover that our unassigned fund balance is projected to increase 1.2 million to 5.8 million. And then our total fund balance is projected to increase, again, 1.2 million or to almost 7 million. So this is the detail that you approved two weeks ago. The next steps, the public has an opportunity to give feedback to the school board. Then uh, you would certify the final levy. I send that into the auditors, and then they calculate the final tax bill. And they start collecting in April and May, and it's revenue for the next school year, 25, 26. So we're asking that the board certify the levy as presented. If there's, you know, no public comment, and then questions, so you should ask if there's any public comment?
Right, um, is there any public comment? Anyone who wants to step to the podium and make any comments or address the board? All right, seeing none, then.
Yep, I'm done. So do you have any questions for me on the levy? And thank you to Dan for the cough drop, 'cause I've got a cold.
I'll make a motion to certify the final levy.
Second.
Been first and seconded. Um, any discussion or comments? All right, hearing none. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries six zero. All right, next on the agenda is updated financial projections.
Okay, um, this is something that was normally be done in January or February. You can come. But I am doing it early this year, um, as this is the last board meeting that I'm gonna attend on a regular basis. So, wanna get this done before Mr. Fell comes in and takes over for me. And he appreciated that very much.
Imagine he did.
He did.
And I really wanted an opportunity to present with her.
Okay, the first thing when making financial projections, you have to um get your assumptions down. I've documented all the assumptions that I made. So the formula, the Janet formula, uh, the um last funding year, two years ago, they um, the state legislature approved a cost of living increase in the Janet formula with a floor of 2% and a ceiling of 3%. And based on what MDE is currently saying, those future years will be. It looks likely to be about 2.3% average per year uh for the next five years. So that's what I use for the Janet revenue. Have put in some reasonable salary and benefits, benefits consistent with past settlements. And um, you know, I, I don't um, they're, they're just, they're reasonable and they're, you know, considered um with the historical trend that we have. Some other things, the summer employment revenue will probably not be available after 24, 25. It looks like school districts are eating it up faster than what they thought. And this summer was approximately $250,000. So that's a burden that the district is going to have to take going forward, unless the legislature approves some more money for that. There is a little bit of help still, so we could charge um food service fund and community services for their um costs, so that would be not included in the general fund. And for special ed paras, we could include that in our special ed formula, so we don't have to absorb the entire 250. But certainly it will be an increased cost for the district. A reduction of 3 to 5 FTE at elementary level, just due to smaller class sizes moving through the grades. And a large fifth grade leaving with a smaller incoming K. And then adding three school bus purchases per year, starting in 25, 26. We've delayed them two separate years. And I use a mix of capital and general fund for those. Unfortunately, those buses have increased from like 98,000 to about 130,000. Um, so that is a, that is a very big expense for us every year. But our fleet is um getting older and we really need to start replacing those buses. So right now, we plan to purchase a new reading curriculum that um meets the state guidelines for 25, 26, and it's approximately $380,000. And then 50,000 consumables every year thereafter. We will have, if you recall from the budget that I, that I presented last week, we'll have some money in reserve. The, the state gave us 162,000 for the pur- purpose of purchasing equi- um curriculum. And we'll also have some literacy incentive aid to apply um to that. Uh, but that will be something we need to purchase next year. We also have another curriculum purchased due in 26, 27. I put $300,000 in for that. We had some delayed technology projects from the last couple of budget cycles. And I added those uh projects over the next three to four years. And I'm gonna assume actual expenses come in at minus 0.75% each year going forward. And I assume revenue comes in as projected. So just a summary about the assumptions. I used the enrollment as presented in November, which throws us down 112 students next year. Again, I use reasonable salary benefit increases. Um, we're putting back in the large purchases that we have delayed. And I'm assuming these expenditures come in 0.75% lower than the budget. Actually, it has averaged 1 to 1.5. Last year it was 1.3, so that is conservative. And I assumed revenue come into budget, but yearly, we've av- averaged coming in 0.5% above budget. So you can see that I'm um being conservative in my projections. So the result, um, budget reductions will not be required for 25, 26. Uh, the reason for that, remember, we had that $2 million out there from last February. So the 23, 24 fund balance came in 1 million higher than projected. Part of that was revenue, part of that was uh coming in under budget for expenses. We also had enrollment higher than projected this year. That's $610,000. We had that early retirement incentive that saved us 225,000. And then we had some other increased revenue from the state. Some are restricted, but some was not. And they are able to, were able to pay for current expenses out of that. So that's kind of why that $2 million isn't required at this point. However, budget reductions will likely be needed in 26, 27. And again, depending on enrollment, salary and benefit settlements, all our contracts are unsettled as of June 30th, um, 2025. And then inflation and what happens in the market. So beyond 25, 26, we still have a structural problem into the future with our enrollment projections decreasing of about an average of 100 students per year. That's what we're showing without any new development. And so our revenue is increasing only 0.3% per year, but our expenditures, expenditures are increasing an average of 4%. Again, salary, benefit um, um, are the main ones. You know, utilities and inflation for other things. So um, that is still a structural issue we have with the budget that will need to be addressed.
Yeah, as we, as uh, we have prepared to have Sandy transition out and Mr. Brian Fell come in. Uh, Sandy and I have had a lot of discussions about terminology and we're, terms that are used in New Prague. And things that, that, that they've used prior to me coming in and what, how we're gonna approach this with, with Brian coming in and just to make sure we're on the same page. So if you remember, in the last year, we defined a structural reduction as $500,000 or more. And um, if you go back to the planning for success process, we talked about, those were things that we would bring to the board, make sure that you were, had an opportunity to understand, had an opportunity to digest, give feedback on. Uh, going forward, we, we would like to move that to $250,000 or more. Knowing that we're in a different financial spot than we were a year ago, knowing that we have more time. And we'll talk a little bit more about structural. And then I, I just wanted to be noted and known, and we've used different terminology. I think Sandy and I have got to, to be able to say the same thing. But cost containments are things that we're going to just continue to do whether you instruct us to or not. So for example, on a previous slide, Sandy referenced uh fewer elementary students and maybe making reductions in elementary or making reductions in elementary if those kindergarten numbers don't come in or come in where they are projected. So those are things that we will commit to do um in order to control costs, to contain our costs going forward. We wouldn't necessarily bring it to you as an action item. That's just things that we would do to make sure that we are an efficient and effective organization. But going back to structural, those are things that we would want the board to, to have a, to have an understanding of and then able to weigh in on. Make sense? So, uh, I, I ask for you to consider two options, knowing what you've just heard. I know a lot of numbers thrown at you. I'll go through each of these options. I shared these options with you at the end of the week. But you do have the option, based on the financial picture where we're at, of not making any reductions this year. You know, last year, um, we didn't, everybody wanted to know when we were making the $3.5 million reductions, what else it could be. And so we said it could be, or Sandy gave the projection, it may be close to $2 million. We don't know that at that time, but that's what we said it could be. And I think that is lingering and that is out there in the community and with our staff of another $2 million rounds of cuts. So we either need to, to get some clarity around that. I think that would help for us. It's one of the reasons to have this discussion tonight. Again, um, so you have that option based on where we're at to, to not make any structural adjustments. We will continue to do those cost containments. Um, those are things that, that um will continue even after Sandy moves on. And then we would take January, February to study some of those structural adjustments that we've talked about in planning for success. Those would be an additional reductions to transportation. There, we, we raised the, the walking distance by a point five. We could go another point five and even another point five there. And then the other areas where I would want to, and we would come to you in January, February, to give you lots of information about is the models, the seven-period day at the high school and the seven-period day then at the middle school. We did not affect the high school model. We affected the middle school model and we moved it to a seven-period day. We would analyze and look for what other reductions could be made if necessary going forward. And I would want to give you a lot of opportunities to understand that and discuss that, ask questions. Um, and so we would do that in the uh January, February range. That's option one. Option two is um, you could say to us, we still want to make reductions. We're not out of our budget issues, concerns um going forward. That, this would be a much quicker process. We would continue to do cost containments. That's something that we're committed to doing, to be a lean organization, to be good steward of taxpayers' dollars. You can see though, that it becomes much more accelerated. We would have to have a pretty lengthy and some pretty difficult discussions in January to understand what all those options could be in terms of those structural changes. You would have to identify then a target about what you would need to do, and I just mapped this out as in February. And then by March, we would really need to go through a, a process, a planning for success two process, if you will. We know the information, but we would wanna formalize that and share that information with staff, community presentations, a lot like we did last year. Again, we have the information. Now we need to give it to you. But I think as we try to be transparent with the community, we would need to have a similar process. But I think as we try to be transparent with the community, we would need to have a similar process to what we did last spring, albeit abbreviated. That's option two, and then there's always the option for you to say, what about option three? Or a combination of the two. So I will go back to option one and, and see what questions or comments people have, and then we'll go to two and ask for you to kind of give us a, your best recommendation as to how to approach the two thousand and twenty-five, post-Sandy, I call it now. But how you would like us to approach this going forward. Option one, questions, comments?
I like the idea of, because we can, taking our time and actually doing a really good in-depth study of this and, and take our time and dot all our i's and cross all our t's before we jump in with anything that I would feel would be too rushed. I'd like the idea of going slowly.
And I'll add to that, that I think as long as we're continuing doing the cost containment items in which we've already mentioned, I think that's important. We always have to just make sure we're always monitoring all of our expenses and as enrollment hopefully doesn't decrease. But if it does, then we're making sure we're adjusting our, our staff appropriately to match those needs. So, so yes, I think option one is the option that I would go with. But as long as we're continuing to contain our expenses and monitoring all those items, so.
I, I would take option one also. There's a part of me that says no, but I think for the reason that you stated and also the, the fact that we are at the need for a zero reduction, well, let's go ahead and enjoy that year and be very careful, be very vigilant on our spending so that we don't prove ourselves wrong in twenty-five and twenty-six, and then look what has to be done for the following.
I would agree as well. I, my, just in doing a little research before the meeting, what I see in this option is stability. We had a lot of change recently, and it will provide to cultivate stability, continue to do that while also being creative. So I appreciate that you are going to go to these lengths to, to the cost containment and be creative in the schools to make some structural adjustments. So, thank you.
I think we're in a race. You know, when we look at the state budget forecasts, twenty-eight, twenty-nines, down five-point-one billion in the whole. That's seven point, that's seven percent of the total state budget. I'm a firm believer that we're going to be moving general fund money to pay for our food services in this timeframe. The tendency of everything education-related is to increase the number of mandates, spread it out and not fund them, and slowly reduce support for them over time, and that moves it into the general budget. And so the, the downside of delay, I think, is it snowballs to be a bigger problem as you look further and further into the future. And so I, and I think, you know, some stability and such. I think making changes in parts of our organization, like if we're looking at the high school, for example. I think looking at the high school, while we might leave the middle school alone for another year. But I think the inevitable thing is that we have an education funding crisis, and it doesn't matter how much we levy. It doesn't, you know, every district in the state is in financial crisis to some degree or another. None are avoiding cuts. And it's, it's going to kind of get put back in the bottle for a little while, but we are only two or three years away from declining enrollment, declining state support. And if the expenses keep going at the rate they are, even with all the other things, the biggest levy we could pass in this area might cover a year or two of increased expenses, not even, not even getting ahead. And so, so I think it's, I think being cautious is good, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't skip the year with the doing something methodical that we know can get us more sustainable long-term.
So you're saying option two, then, would be the one that you'd favor?
Yeah, like, like I think we have some things that we already know to some degree of certainty that, that we could get some savings from, and, and it wouldn't be as disruptive of some of the things we did last year. But I think we're in a position where, year after year after year, regardless of levy condition, we are going to be in financial crisis as the number of enrollment goes down. I was surprised at the size of the, of the capital projects that are, that are needed to be done. I was slightly more optimistic that we were trying to get out of debt in twelve years, and we might be able to delay enough stuff, but there's a large capital budget as well that we have to address. And so when you, when you combine all those things, I think we might feel better than we are, but I, I think we're still in a fairly major crisis.
I mean, I think the structural budget reductions we made for this year have really, you know, put the district in a better situation for sure, but certainly a dollar cut earlier than later saves, you know, saves and cuts in the long run. You're right. Yep.
Yeah, I think we see that, how it, how it plays out into year after year after year. And so I, I do think, you know, the sooner we make some of these decisions that are clear, the better off we'll be long-term as we try to set ourselves on a, on a more stable financial footing.
Other comments, questions?
Would there be, I understand what you're saying, Dan. Thank you for that information. So is there a way to flesh that out a little more, to have a better understanding that if we were to delay, what that would look like? Could we be in crisis? I realize that these are assumed projections, and, and some of them are more solid. But is that something that, did you explain all of that already, or is there something that would be helpful?
We can start the process in January. I will tell you, these are pretty big-ticket items. You know, talking about increasing walking distance and going to the max is, is a pretty big-ticket item, and it doesn't save a lot of additional money. I think we have it calculated at a total of about a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. So these items are, are pretty significant. I would want you to, to find a way to balance what Mr. Call is, is saying, because I think it's true, but also really looking at what the impact would be of increasing walking distances or affecting models or structural types of things. Again, we've done a lot of the work. We'll continue to find other ways to do it. We have a pretty resourceful person right here, and we think these are the next logical areas for us to go. I think it really, you have to, you have to decide how quickly you want to move, knowing that they're pretty big items. I'm going to be honest with you. Talking about these items are meaty, right? And they would bring a lot of emotion in a very short amount of time. And the caution, and this isn't done by design, I hope you know that. It's just really trying to, to process the change and the transition to make sure that you have the information so you can make an informed decision. But I would want to, if we were going to make these decisions, have them done prior to spring break again. I think we owe that to the people who would be impacted. We need that internally for the time. So I think there's just, I'm just throwing out some other things to consider.
The thing with structural reductions is that our biggest expense is labor, is people. So that would probably impact people and jobs sooner than later, is what we'd be looking.
The, the seven-period day in the high school would progress to that, yes?
An example of a structural discussion that we did not, that we referenced last year that we didn't dive deep into. I'm sure that would be something we would need to look at.
Okay.
I think the plan is to, whether or not there's a target budget reduction that, you know, they, they would present information in January and February on some of these other options, the implications, the cost savings and so forth. So it's not like that would just be dropped.
So the discussions will happen without there being a, yeah, like Sandy is saying more eloquently than I, than a budget reduction for twenty-five, twenty-four, twenty-five at the end of the school year. So the discussion will happen, then you would then be informed for what to do in twenty-five, six.
And on the elementary level, it would probably be looking at increasing class sizes?
Yeah, you know, that's a really good question. When we did the class size increase last year, I, I believe it's Sandy, as we were analyzing, I always say one click, we did one click higher than we thought because it really didn't have an impact. So we raised our elementary class sizes considerably without having that impact. We could go again, but that would have a, a pretty big impact. So we're prepared, and one of the reasons why, when we reference those cost containments, are just things that we will continue to do because of the extra step-up we did with elementary class sizes and not having an impact last year or this year, but it would have an impact going forward. Does that make sense?
Yes.
But I guess that's another example of cost containments that we're committed to, that we will continue to do.
Have to remember, like, at the elementary level, the target class size goes up as the grades go through. So this year, we had, it really wasn't a huge change in our class sizes at elementary. I think fourth and fifth grade increased slightly, but the others really didn't. But as you move forward, those targets get higher, and so there's opportunity there as well.
Any other questions or comments from the group?
I guess just one last thought. My goal, if I were to go with option one, would be to provide stability and dispel fear with the staff and the community, and of course, the students. And so I think that happens with communication, which I feel like we are really excelling at and doing a good job. So if we were to opt for option one, then I, what I'm hearing from you is if, if things are impending and we need to make change and it's going to be significant, we'll provide clear communication and advance notice of things just to maintain trust and... Is that fair to say? Okay.
One, one other thing I will add, I want to, I love to put Sandy on the spot. Fund balance goal is about eight percent. And we, we had this, we had this debate this morning at about nine o'clock. So we'll rehash it one more time about twelve hours later. I always, she, I always say dollar figures, and she says percents. So that's how we've worked. But our goal is eight percent, which is around...
Three-point-eight million dollars.
And we anticipate the fund balance at the end of this academic year to be around...
Twelve-point-four percent. I forget the exact, but that would be about six million dollars.
So we've given ourselves a little bit of additional cushion, if you will, going forward. It doesn't mean that we're structurally out of the, out of the woods here, but I think that's important information as well to share. So I don't think this is an action item, per se. It's more of the will of the group. I think all the, the opinions are good, and I appreciate them. I would also say, then, I'm hearing the will of the group is to not have a target figure for this year, at the end of this academic year, but to go and to study those structural items, bring that to you, and also then continue to do the cost containments that we, we've done with Sandy and we will do after Sandy leaves. Is that fair? Then the other part would be, then, there needs to be a discussion again, and we would pick this up again, not related, but somewhat related to status of a referendum. We, we did that fall throughout, we did those discussions around the fall. We talked about those options. I will start to revisit that, kind of as parallel discussions as we go forward. And that could be both operating and capital projects, but those are things that will be coming in two thousand and twenty-five. Well, Sandy's at home watching us on TV. Anything else you need, any other questions you have, or any other information you would like to get, like me to gather for you? Okay, thank you.
All right, now, next up are the approval of the two new high schools. Oh, I faked you guys out last time, so.
High schools?
High school, of course.
Or just high school. There's only one high school.
Good evening. We have two new course proposals that we would like to provide you with some information tonight that we would then intend, with your support and approval, put in our registration guide for the upcoming school year at the high school. And we took both of these courses to our district advisory at our November meeting for feedback as well. So Brian Thorstedt and I will provide a overview of the two courses. And then certainly, if you have questions on the classes, you can ask us when we are completed. So the two courses that we are looking to add at the high school for the upcoming school year are a modern music connection elective course. That would be within our current music department with current staffing, so there's no FTE added for this course. And then we are also looking to add an EMR course, which is for emergency medical responder. And so that would also be staffed with current staff that we have. And so a description for both of the courses with the modern music connections, this would be, this was written by our music staff, and they aligned this to the Minnesota standards in regard to the music standards. And I'll let Brian explain a little bit more about the course.
Absolutely. So we are looking at ways to provide a pathway for New Prague High School students to earn their arts credits at the high school level. And it also provides accessibility to music education at the high school level that's non-performance-based. Many of our groups right now are performance-based strictly, and so this would provide access to that for students who have not performed in, in our band or choir programs in the past. And, and it's always a, a positive to improve accessibility within the current staffing levels that we have. This course would look at a variety of different areas and study a variety of different areas as a general music course would. That would include things such as a little bit of an introduction to music theory and music fundamentals. And our music teachers have come up with outstanding ways while there's no prerequisite needed for this, no public performances necessary, as you'll see on the next slide when we get there. Some of the ways that they can learn about chords are very interactive and providing students with a great opportunity of using ukuleles to learn basic chord structures and things like that. So it is that hands-on, interactive learning opportunity for our students to be able to focus on that content. Also, looking at a history of twentieth-century music styles, looking through the history of musical theater, operettas and modern musicals, and then as well as the role of music in film and television. So really looking at the evolution of music there. And obviously, the course is tied to the state music standards that are in the state of Minnesota. Our teachers have done a very nice job of outlining a variety of student engagement strategies in this course, which you can see listed here. And as we've discussed, really, the only initial cost that would be associated with this course is providing a classroom set of ukuleles for the, for the class, along with the appropriate ukulele tuners to be able to use those appropriately. The course would be a one semester course, so a single semester course. For one class period, it would be open to students in ninth through twelfth grade with no prerequisites.
And as you may recall, one of the enhancements when we adjusted our middle school model for this current school year was we were able to add a middle school music elective there for our seventh and eighth grade students. And though we're just a couple of months in, we've had some really great feedback for the students that are taking that class. As Brian mentioned, it's a way for kids who maybe aren't in band or choir to still participate in a music course, and that's what we're seeing. So we value this as a nice extension to be able to offer that music elective for students who may not be able to commit to a band or choir music class. Questions on the music course?
What would be the class size for this course?
It would be a typical elective class size of around that thirty to thirty-two, obviously dependent on registration numbers, so it would, it would follow that typical class size.
Would there be a critical number that you would need to have register for this class, you know, or for it to be?
We would follow it just like any other elective course. Absolutely, that's correct.
Have you done a student survey of the kids saying, hey, what do you think about this? So that you know whether there's going to be enough incoming to make this go?
We have not done a student survey at the high school yet to determine that. We do know that with some of the reductions that occurred last year, and we, when we look at the number of students requiring that arts requirement, I, I don't anticipate a lack of students who would be, who would be registering, registering for this course. It also provides another elective opportunity at the high school level in another department at the high school, so that's always a positive as well. Yeah.
I think it's great.
All right, and the other course that we're bringing to you is the EMR course that Brian will talk a little bit more about.
Yeah, so we, last year, as... Yeah. So we, last year, as you know, we were very pleased to receive the Youth Skills Training Grant through the Minnesota Department of Labor and Industry. And this course was part of our focus. So we have Lindsay Schute working in our work, workforce coordinator role this year on a part-time basis. And this course being added is kind of the second step in that Youth Skills Training Grant and really providing real world opportunities for our students. And this would provide our students actually with the opportunity to walk away from the class at the, at the high school age with being a certified emergency medical responder. And so that means if they were to come upon an accident or a serious situation, they would have the skills and abilities and be certified to be able to provide life-saving care in those types of situations. We certainly have a robust healthcare pathway right now with several healthcare options at New Prague High School. We're very proud of that. And this would provide another facet to that. Really, the course would result in students having the ability to be both certified in the CPR area and then as well as the emergency medical responder areas. And if you go to that next slide, as you can see, these are just some of the different areas that students would cover. But they really look at the roles, responsibilities. And I think it's interesting to cover that ethical component of when you arrive on scene, what the role of an, of an emergency medical responder is, learning how to assess the situation, learning how to apply appropriate medical care, such as airways, breathing, breathing, all of those different types of things. You know, overall, it also provides some really outstanding opportunities for community engagements and partnerships, for our students to be able to work with not only our instructors here at the high school, but also work with local healthcare representatives in our region. So it, it is a, a high quality program, a high quality opportunity for our students. And we are also very pleased that many of the initial costs associated with the type of equipment that's necessary, because there is equipment that's necessary for this course, would be covered by the Youth Skills Training Grant.
Questions on the addition of the EMR course?
Who would be the instructors for this? Would they come from the health department?
They would, they would come from a variety of departments. So from an emergency medical responder standpoint, it wouldn't necessarily come from the FIAID department or our wellness department. It's based on some of our, we're still finalizing that, but it's based on the current certifications and some of those types of things that our staff has. And the music course would come from our music department.
Are there going to be any other class or courses dropped at all for next year? That are going, this is going to take the place of, or are just going to be, are these going to be additional?
We don't plan on currently dropping any right now. There are a few that we will need to look at reducing from the course guide, just because our enrollment trends show that they haven't run in several years. So we are at a point where it's probably time to start looking at should, should certain courses be in the course guide still. But I think we're at a spot where we would continue to offer those courses at this time and let student enrollment drive that and then, and then move through a more comprehensive process to drop courses that haven't run for, you know, for say in, in a three-year period or something like that.
Got it. Okay.
I think this is so awesome and it's so practical and useful. And it may pique an interest in the students for a future career. So thank you. That's just wonderful.
Been a great vision as part of what Brian has brought with the Youth Skills Training Grant in getting Lindsay in that role specific to the healthcare pathway. And so it's great to see this coming together. We also have a networking event for our healthcare professionals as we just try to broaden that scope and continue to get people to support our students and get our students into their facilities as well. And that is around healthcare. So this is an area that we're continuing to see. And our current courses with the Mars classes that we do have, we do have student need that are interested in taking the classes. So this will, you know, meet another group of students as well, we believe.
This would allow them to be certified in a number of different ways, but this isn't a college-level course?
Is not.
Okay.
So no, no concurrent enrollment credit with the course. You're correct.
I would think the interest would be pretty high for this class from students.
I would like to take it.
Yeah.
It's so practical.
I said the same thing here. I did.
I think it's a good, good option.
All right. Any other questions? Otherwise, I'd entertain a motion to approve these two new courses.
So move.
Second.
All right. First and seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries six zero. Thank you very much.
Thanks, you guys.
All right. Next on the agenda is the resolution of the New Prague Area Schools Supporting MinDOT Safe Routes to Schools grant application.
The multiple.
Hold up here.
Goodness.
All right. As part of the planning for success last spring that we went through, first couple of meetings that I attended, we really, we started thinking a lot about what would happen if we had kids walking to school because we really never have since I've been here in 23 years. So we started looking at the Safe Routes to School Grant program. That's been a program in Minnesota for years. It's a national, nationally funded program and the, and the state is charged with dishing out the money. We have applied for it in the past, but we never got, never got by the first step, which is the preliminary approval in, we, we sent in this October. So I, I reached out to the city and I, I talked to the city planner and his assistant, the, the director of city planner and then the, his assistant. We met with them and we decided to do a joint effort. So this is a kind of a joint program we did with the city. We're the ones that are the sponsor, if you want to call it that, but we're, we're working with them, using their engineering firms to decide what we're going to do, what we wanted to do with this grant, this grant process. And we did get the approval from the state to move forward with it. The grant application is due on January 17th. And what it will do is it's an addition of sidewalks on 12th Street from the home field addition on the south side of the street to get those crossing kids away from that roundabout where they're currently crossing. Adding some rapid, rectangular rapid beacons that you see, I think down on Main Street, they're a lot more visible than what we have here. Adding a staircase to collect, connect Columbus Avenue to Falcon Ridge right now from Heritage Estates. And I think that, I think that was it.
I've got the whole list here, but I think you've pretty much covered most of them here.
Yeah. So the total of the project comes to estimated about $680,000. And we need this resolution to send our grant application in by that deadline. The city has to do the same thing they're going to be doing theirs next week, I believe.
Questions for Craig?
Are there going to be any out-of-pocket expenses on these projects? There's a possibility that there might be, but it's engineering costs, civil engineering. And we, I don't know, typically they're not really high, but the grant funds do not cover the engineering, the civil engineering. And we would be partnering with the city and using their engineering firm, SEH is their, is their firm that they use. And we've worked with them in the past on our middle school bus loop and some other projects we've had. But I don't foresee it being an astronomical amount of money. It's just, it's just estimates, basically. Well, the money spent to get the 686. Correct. Yep. And safety.
But as it is with grants, once the grant is given and it's established, it will be our respons, I'll cover this too, but it will be our responsibility to maintain it after that.
Sure.
Maintenance of it will fall on the city and the school district.
Yes.
Would, would there be anything for the, for the school to, to cover at that point? Because if it's sidewalks and things like that, that would
We would maintain the sidewalks. We do already. All, all the sidewalks and the boulevards we take care of. Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. And we pay for signage on roads for crosswalks. We, we pay for all that stuff. So.
Any other questions for Craig? If not, then I'll entertain a motion to consider the resolution of the New Prague Area Schools Supporting Minnesota Department of Transportation Safe Routes to School Grant Application.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to consider the following resolution. Whereas an $8.5 million safe routes to school funding is available with a minimum of $50,000 per project and a cap of $1 million per project. Whereas the Minnesota Department of Transportation is responsible for the administration of the state SRTS programs and makes the funds available to communicate through a competitive process. And whereas the New Prague Area Schools Administration, in partnership with the City of New Prague, are proposing the following SRT construction and enhancements. 12th Street Northwest Trail to Falcon Ridge Elementary, rectangular rapid flashing signs at English Avenue, trail extension to the playground at Falcon Ridge Elementary, installation of stairs to connect sidewalks from Columbus Avenue North to Falcon Ridge Elementary, installation of rectangular rapid flashing beacon signs at Heritage Street Northeast in Columbus Avenue North, installation of rectangular rapid flashing beacon signs at Second, Second Street Northeast and 11th Avenue Northwest near Raven Stream Elementary. Whereas the New Prague Area School District understands it's responsible for the project costs and covered by active transportation grant funds, including but not limited to consult, engineering, right-of-way acquisition, construction administration and inspection, utility construction, as well as construction costs above the SRTS grant awards. Whereas the total construction cost estimate is $686,000, $686,38 is planned for the summer of 2025. And whereas, New Prague Area Schools will work together with the City of New Prague with all planning, coordination, budget and construction for the duration of the project. Now therefore be resolved by the New Prague Area School Board of Education in the following. Number one, New Prague Area Schools agrees to maintain such improvements for the lifetime of the improvements. Number two, support is given to the grant application for the Safe Routes to School program and construction of the projects. And number three, the New Prague Area Schools agrees to pay all costs associated with the projects beyond the grant awards. So if there is an overrun, we cover the overrun. How would you vote on this, Karen?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Dennis? Yes. Item passes six zero.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. All right. Last here is the resolution of establishing combined polling places.
Yes. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to consider the polling places for multiple precincts and designating hours during which the polling places will be open for voting for school district elections not held on the day of a statewide election. Do I have a motion to consider this resolution?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to consider the following resolution. Be resolved by the School Board of Independent School District 721 as follows. Pursuant to Minnesota statutes, the precincts and polling places for the school district elections are those precincts or parts of precincts located within the boundaries of the school district which have been established by the cities or towns located in whole or in part within the school district. Number two, pursuant to Minnesota statutes, the board may establish a combined polling place for several precincts for school district elections not held on the day of statewide elections. Each combined polling place must be a polling place that has been designated by a county or municipality. The following combined polling places are established to serve the precincts specified for all the school district special and general elections not held on the same day as a statewide election. The first one is at St. Patrick Social Hall in Cedar Lake Township, Jordan, Minnesota. I want to call this up because I Okay. The next one is New Prague Fitness and Aquatic Center located in New Prague, Minnesota. The next one is a New Prague Fitness and Aquatic Center, also in New Prague, Minnesota. The combined polling places serves all territory in the Independent School District 721 located in the city of New Prague for the last one. Pursuant to Minnesota statutes, the polling places will remain open for voting for school district elections not held on the state day as a statewide election between the hours of seven o'clock AM and eight o'clock PM. How do you vote on this, Dan?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Dennis? Yes. Item passes six zero.
Right. That wraps up our action items. And now we go back to Mr. Vollmuth for his good news update as well.
Well, I've got a couple of things I'd just like to say. Happy holidays to everybody on behalf of the New Prague Area Schools. We're looking forward to a productive month and then taking some time off to rest, relax, relax and celebrate with family and friends. I want to remind everybody, and we've started to talk about this, that we've done our long-term facilities plan. So now we are organizing a facilities task force to seek community support. We're going to be looking for parents, family members, community members, staff members. And so information will be sent out about that, that facilities task force in early January, hoping to have meetings throughout January, February and into March to prioritize our needs and then make a recommendation to the board about what, what the community believes should be done. And then the board will be able to weigh in on that. So more information is coming about that.
Can I make a comment on that?
You sure can.
Andy, we've done this in the past and it's been a very successful way of getting community involvement in the future of our district and the future projects that we have possibly lining up, you know, in the, in the years to come. So I hope we have a good turnout of community members that would be willing to join us on these committees.
Yeah, I'm hoping so. We've, we've had several different meetings, just kind of pre-planning meetings. And I think we've got a good plan. Communication will start to be sent out. We already talked about it a little bit in our, in our staff and family newsletters. The, the questionnaire or the application, if you will, will be sent out in early January. And I think we'll, we'll be able to find people to be involved. I really do. So looking forward to that. Anything else? More to come on that. I am really excited and honored to announce that Mr. Denny Hevlycek has been selected as the Minnesota School Boards Association All-State Award Member. All-state designation is MSBA's most prestigious honor and it is given to members who are active participants in MSBA-related activities and who have a proven track record of positively impacting education at both the local and the state level. Denny, we did a little research this fall, has been a part of this board since July 1st, 1996. I won't tell you what I was doing in 1996, nor do you want me to, want to know, Denny. Prior to this, and I think this is just a testament to Denny's dedication to public education prior to this. And even a little bit of an overlap, Denny worked for 34 years as a special education teacher, then a guidance counselor for the Bloomington Public Schools. And if you know Denny, you also know that he is an active and enthusiastic member of Southwest Metro Intermediate School District Number 288. Denny, along with the other award recipients from across the state, will be formally recognized at MSBA's annual conference in January. Let's give him another big round of applause. I would also like to thank Mr. Goldaddy. It's good to have you back.
It does. It feels good to be back.
It's good to have you back in that chair.
Don't be it for one day, but yes.
Yeah. I want to thank Matt, outgoing school board member and Chair Matt for his service and leadership to New Prague over the past four-plus years. I remember the story, as I was writing this earlier today, though I wasn't here, about you taking the oath in your basement during COVID, which kind of leads to the next line. Matt has served and served us very well at some really, at some very unique and challenging times. And I, and I know others have appreciated his thoughtful and steady And I, and I know others have appreciated his thoughtful and steady leadership throughout. So on behalf of everyone associated with the New Prague Area Schools, it's good to have you back. We wish you nothing but the best, you and your family, nothing but the best. And again, thank you for your service. Let's give him a big round of applause.
I guess I'll just, I'll just say it's been a privilege to be here for the last five years. I really, it's been great working alongside all of you. I truly, truly mean that from my, bottom of my heart. So I wish you guys all the best in the future, because I know there's going to be some challenging days ahead, but I'm sure there'll be plenty of good times too. So all the best. So.
He told me he really misses, is going to miss the phone calls when I call him in the middle of the day and he's calculating numbers. Anyway, and as we're doing that, Ms. Sandy Lynn, would you please come back up here one more time, please? Did you see that look?
Yeah.
It'll be the last time we'll see you at that table.
And she's not feeling very good, but I call this my ode to Sandy Lynn. I would have written a poem, but I'm not very artistic. We owe Sandy a deep gratitude for her over 14 years of service to the New Prague Area Schools. And I'm going to keep this short because she doesn't want any of it. But individuals who have a deep expertise in human resources and business services do not come around very often. And Sandy has served us all very, very well during her tenure. She possesses a calm, upbeat demeanor and makes her, it makes her hard to rattle even during some of the most challenging times. And her positive upbeat mindset make her a trusted confidant for many, including myself, who seek her wisdom and advice and who have done so over the years. Most importantly, Sandy's just a really, really good person. She loves this attention. So on behalf of all of us, I wish Sandy nothing but the best going forward and, and the, and hope that the years to come are filled with health, happiness for both you and your family. Thank you very much. Let's give her another big round of applause.
I'd like to add that Sandy was an employee of Minnesota Valley Special Ed Co-op. And she and I, when I was a board member on that particular organization, Sandy was the finance person there. So when she came to New Prague, it was great to have her come aboard here, even though we stole her from Minnesota Special Ed Co-op. Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you, Sandy.
And before we adjourn, I'd just like to note that there's, I believe, thank you to, to Jean and others. There's some cake and some refreshments in the back as we celebrate Matt and Sandy. So hopefully everyone can stick around and enjoy that. And Sandy will give her speech back then before we go. But thank you for letting me do that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So move.
Why don't you do it, Matt?
Did I even do that?
Sure.
Okay, I'll second it. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries six zero.
Thank you, Matt.